Okay, okay.
Halton as we know it today.
Is rich in history and modern traditions.
And first from the nation of Ate.
From the lands of the Anchenabe.
To the Adewandron.
The Hoda Shone.
And the Metis.
These lands surround Eden greatly.
Our deepened indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us on solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
Four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
And the moms.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mrs. Sauckas of the Credit First Nations.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you so much. Let us begin our meeting tonight with an opening prayer by trustee Carabella.
Thank you. Name the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen. Actually, first I just wanted to say that the, I'm going to speak about the Rosary because on October 7th was the feast day of the Holy Rosary. It's a beloved prayer among Catholics around the world. It is a meditative aid that can bring people closer to Jesus through his mother, Mary. October 7th was the feast day of the Holy Rosary. We ask in particular to our Lady, through praying the Holy Rosary, to accompany and come to the aid of many people who are suffering enormously, going through this conflict in the Middle East. Pope Francis says this of the Rosary in his recent trip to Malta. By praying, we allow God to enter our time, to welcome and transfigure all that we experience. Often make use of this powerful instrument, the prayer of the Holy Rosary, because it brings peace to hearts, to families, the church, and the world. And so I will read a prayer from the earliest, early 20th century, asking, that ask the Virgin Mary to accompany us in our recitation of the Rosary. So name the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Amen. O Virgin Mary, grant that the recitation of thy Rosary may be for us each day, in the midst of our manifold duties, a bond of unity in our actions, a tribute of filial piety, a sweet refreshment, an encouragement to walk joyfully along the path of duty. Grant above all, O Virgin Mary, that the study of thy fifteen mysteries may form in our souls, little by little, a luminous atmosphere, pure, strengthening, and fragrant, which may penetrate our understanding, our wills, our hearts, our memories, our imaginations, our whole being. So shall we acquire the habit of praying while we work, without the aid of formal prayers, by interior acts of admiration and of supplication, or by aspirations of love. We ask this of thee, O Queen of the Holy Rosary, through Saint Dominic, thy son of predilection, the renowned preacher of thy mysteries, and the faithful imitator of thy virtues. Amen. Name the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Okay, so moving on, number two, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, may I have a mover to approve? Okay, trustee Powell. Trustee Agnew. All, is all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, see no one opposed, the motion passes and the agenda is approved for this evening. Thank you very much. Moving on, declarations of conflict of interest. Do we have any conflicts of interest to declare this evening from anyone? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Item number four. Item number four is delegations. We do not have any delegations this evening. I'll move on to item number five, which is approval of the minutes of September 12, 2023. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes of the September 12, 2023 Policy Committee meeting? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to please approve the minutes of the September 12, 2023 Policy Committee meeting? May I have a mover, please? Dwork? Okay, and trustee Powell, second? Okay, no one opposes, the motion passes and the minutes are approved. Okay, moving on to item number six, which are action items. We're going to move into item 6.1. Policy I-22, admission to schools, elementary and secondary. Trustees, may I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that policy I-22, admission to schools, elementary and secondary, be forwarded to the October 17, 2023 regular board meeting for approval. May I have a mover, please? Okay, trustee Agnew? Trustee Powell will second. Okay, Director Klein, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Just waiting for that change on the... Will that change on the screen or no? Thank you. So, to the trustees, I would point out that this, when this was, since this is, was last modified, there have been very few revisions. So if you look through it, you'll see basic kind of bookkeeping revisions around the nomenclature, HCDSB, et cetera, Halton Catholic District School Board. Strangely enough, the one on the second page, there's one, second bullet talks about proof of address. That has always been something that's been required for admission, but it just wasn't in it for many years. But many of us would remember that from many years ago registering our own kids, or if you were a principal, having students brought into your school. The other one in terms of nomenclature just reflects the kindergarten programming, and that's, we don't say junior kindergarten or senior kindergarten anymore, we say year one and year two of the kindergarten programming. The shift in terms of things like proof of address, et cetera, continues into the required documents. So, no significant changes. The one that preceded this too had no, no significant changes. And this is what is being proffered tonight in terms of changes. Fairly cosmetic.
Thank you, Director Klein. I will now open the floor to any questions. I do see a hand up. I believe that is trustee Dwork. Trustee Dwork, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can we scroll down to page three? And, yeah, the fourth bullet there, I think there's some typo there, one, two, three, four, five. Fifth bullet does a number of 171, 17 in the middle there. Looks like a prisoner number. So that needs correction. Yeah, 17, 17, 17, 117. What's that?
Oh, way down there. Oh, yeah, that's a good one. I was looking at the upper 17. Okay. That's a very old student.
Can we have that corrected, Madam?
Thank you, trustee Dwork.
Proof.
It's probably proof of new address. Is that what it's supposed to?
Yeah.
So, okay, so let's read what it should say. A student who is 16 or 17 years of age and has indicated they have withdrawn from parental backslash guardian control is required to show proof of new address and indicate in writing they have withdrawn from parental guardian control. That's what that is? Okay. So we'll have that cleaned up. Thank you, trustee Dwork, for finding that. Okay, any follow-up question, trustee Dwork?
Uh, no, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. I do not see any other questions in regards to I-22. So, I will now take it to a recorded vote of the main motion. Trustee Agnew. In favor. Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Murphy? Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Student trustee McGuire?
In favor.
And I don't believe student trustee Chu or Deepu is here. Are they here? No. And I am in favor. Okay, so the policy, this passes. We have a majority. The policy will be brought forward to the next regular board meeting on October 17, 2023. Thank you, everybody. Okay, moving on. We're moving on to item 6.2, which is policy II-34, participation in programs and courses of study in Catholic religious education. Trustees, could I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that policy II-34, participation in programs and courses of study in Catholic religious education be forwarded to the October 17, 2023 regular board meeting for approval. May I have a mover? Trustee Carabella? May I have a seconder? Okay, trustee Saunders, I think. Okay, Superintendent Crowell, you now have the floor.
Sure. Good evening and through you, Madam Chair. Please to provide policy 2-34 for review. We've made some minor housekeeping changes, much like we did with the previous policy, as well as updating the references to include the Institute for Catholic Education. This policy's been in standing for a number of years without any major revisions for a number of years. So happy to take any questions that trustees might have.
Thank you, Superintendent Crowell. I will now, trustees, open the floor. If there's any questions? Seeing none? I will now take it to a recorded vote of the main motion for policy II-34. Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew? Student trustee McGuire?
In favor.
I am also in favor. Passes unanimously. So the policy will now be brought forward to the next regular board meeting on October 17, 2023. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we're now moving forward to item 6.3, which is policy III-12, academic promotion. Trustees, could I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that policy III-12, academic promotion, be forwarded to the October 17, 2023 regular board meeting for approval. May I please have a mover? Trustee Powell? May I have a seconder? I'll say. Trustee Murphy, thank you. Superintendent Oldman, you now have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chair. This evening's IIII-12, which is academic promotion, really has had pretty innocuous updates or revisions to it, but certainly relevant ones. So the purpose and requirement sections have been updated to be mirrored with our equity and inclusive education policy and language, as well as references to the Ontario Human Rights Code and PPM 165, which, which is the, kind of, I guess, the driving force behind our inclusive and equitable education policy and procedure. And that's, that is the update for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. I will now open the floor to any questions. I see trustee Saunders, you have your hand up. You can please go ahead.
Yeah, this, this policy, though well-intentioned, I'd like to sort of speak to it because I think we should probably, to be honest, strike these two amendments. Because I'll sort of tell you, so having sort of lived in this environment for 25 years where you're trying to promote equity to serve in groups or, or underrepresented groups, it's extremely difficult and extremely fraught with issues. So, like, for instance, what we'll end up having to do, if we go through this, is we're going to have to have people self-identify. And then we're going to have to have a process where we compare, you know, who we have in the schools with, you know, what we have in Halton District to try and, you know, make sure that we have representation in the board. And then identify underrepresented groups. And then we're going to have to design sort of competitions that where, you know, people get into the pool, they do their, their evaluations, and then we go through it, or we say, we're looking for certain underrepresented groups. So we may have, you know, 20 people who've been successful. We're going to go through this, this list, and we're going to find the first person that represents, you know, whatever underrepresented group that we want to do. So this person could be the fifth best, 10th best, 20th best person. And, and this person will be the one that gets a job. And...
So, trust, sorry, trustee Saunders, I don't mean to cut you off. I'm just, I just need some clarity about, so is there a question to superintendent Oldman?
Well, I'm going to propose an amendment. I just want to give you some background. So having lived through this, if I can just spend two more minutes to sort of give you an... So the problem with it, with this, this, these amendments, and what this will lead to is you're going to get probably the wrong people in the job. You're not going to get the best people. You're going to get, you're going to have more, more issues of poor morale. You're going to get the, the best people not getting jobs. You're going to get education suffering. And, and so when you go through this process, it's fraught with a lot of issues. And what ends up happening is you end up having grievances, where you have people who didn't get the job, they're going to agree. You're not going to be able to staff the job until the grievances are done. And then, like, and I don't know how it works with the Halton District Catholic District Board, but you may have to put someone in acting. And the government is like six months less a day, and then you have to put another actor in there. Or if you continue the acting, then you're going to have grievances because you're, you're saying that you're going to keep someone in there because of operational requirements. So you're going to end up with the wrong people. There's a better way to do this. Rather than say we're going to, we're going to, you know, identify people in, in groups, we're going to put them in position. What we should do, in fact, is say, look, go out, encourage people from these groups to apply for processes. Bring them in and, and run them through the same process. And in two or three years, you're going to achieve what you want. But you're not going to have this sort of ham-fisted, you know, selecting people who are, you know, instead of being the best people or the right people.
Yeah. Sorry, trustee Saunders, your opinion, you know, everyone's about, but you're, you're making assumptions that are...
Okay, I am, but, but, okay, the last thing I'll say is that in this approach is an implicit racism. Because what you're saying is the people, the people...
Sorry, trustee Saunders, what's your point of order?
Like, what's going on? My point of order is that we're starting to veer into conversations that, you look at our code of conduct, there's some assumptions, there's some comments being made about implied racism. There are some conversations about people who don't deserve a job getting them because they're from an underrepresented group. And I just think we need to be conscientious about some of the verbiage that is being utilized in your...
I'm... Hang on a second. Go ahead, trustee Agnew.
I would just caution trustee Saunders from some of the, like I said, some of the language that's being utilized to discuss the example, because I think some of it is out of line.
Due to be noted, trustee Agnew, trustee Saunders?
And I will clarify what I'm saying.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Everyone, hold on.
And I will clarify.
Hold on. Okay, so the original of this question is that you have an amendment that you'd like to propose.
I would like to bring an amendment for the reasons that there's, you know, in this process, what will come out is implicit racism. In that people are not capable of doing the job unless we tip the table. There are many people from these groups.
Trustee, don't you have a point of order, Madam Chair? Point, you have to stop talking, trustee Saunders. I raised a point.
You're not letting me finish.
That's enough. That's enough. That's enough. That's enough. Okay? We're going to talk about the policy. And trustee Saunders, I want you to put your amendment forward.
I will. Who do I send it to? Is it Claudia?
Yeah, send it to Claudia.
Okay, I got it written.
We have to be careful as a board that we're not implying things that we don't need to.
We're not implying things. There are many people that are qualified.
Trustee Saunders, please.
But we have to do it the right way.
Please, that's what I'm trying to get us to do. And I'm trying to follow the process. So please send your amendment.
I will.
We will look at the amendment as a committee, and then we can make discussion. We can have discussion there.
All right, so let me set up.
I'm sorry, trustee Kennedy, do you have a point of order?
Just a procedural matter. Do, can we, can we talk about the policy before we... Just questions about what's already here versus changing. And I understand some of the things that I asked the questions, and they wouldn't...
Trustee Kennedy, you could, but trustee Saunders put his hand up and wants to propose an amendment, so I kind of have to follow.
Can we do that at the end?
That's not really up to me. We have to discuss the amendment now because he's brought it forward, trustee Kennedy.
Do you want me to bring the amendment at the end?
I'm just wanting you to do, you put your hand up with an amendment, so I just want to kind of see what your amendment is, so we can discuss it as a committee.
Madam Chair, it was a point of order from trustee Agnew. Can you rule on the point of order?
I don't have a bylaw, but I, trustee Saunders, I told him be careful of his assumptions.
No, there was another point of order up to the...
What was that? Okay.
I'll be able to speak to this amendment, clarify.
Then we'll have to move it, right?
Okay.
Second it, and then you'll be able to speak to it. But I do caution everyone at this table.
Yeah.
Please do not use assumptions. Please be careful in the language. I'm not trying to veto you, but please be careful. Because I don't want to have to hit the gavel and stop people from speaking. Okay? Let's just talk about the facts and what your amendment is. Please. We are way out of, I've got trustee Saunders and trustee Carabella has her hand up. Trustee Powell wants to speak. Trustee Carabao, Carabella, you next? Or we still have to do this amendment? We're waiting for the amendment? Um, no. 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 No, I want to keep it kind of organized. I want to make sure we're going one step at a time. So I'm not trying to be rude, but no.
Claudia, propose striking those two sections? Putting in the amendment.
It's okay, Claudia, take your time. Take your time. While I'll stand down for a few minutes.
Madam Chair, can I raise a point of order?
You may raise, raise a point of order. What is your point of order?
Bylaw 10.3 says amendments in writing, any substantial amendments shall be submitted in writing. Has that been done, Madam Chair? Or we should move on the next time?
I believe it's been submitted in writing to Claudia.
Has it been submitted in advance? Yeah, stop, we have stopped the meeting right now. We're just waiting. So my suggestion, Madam Chair, is just we move on and then come back to this amendment by time, rather than waste the time of the floor. That's the purpose of bylaw 10.3, Madam Chair.
Perfect. So thank you, trustee Dwork. Let me just take a look at 10.3. My hearing's going, so I know you read it out, but I couldn't hear you.
Bylaw 10.3 says any substantial amendment shall, shall be submitted in writing. And the typical way we'd work on this, if it's not submitted in writing, we move on to the next topic, and then we come back to this item after it's received in writing. So, Madam Chair. I've...
So your suggestion is just to move on with the next speaker in line, and then we'll deal with the amendment? That's kind of what trustee Kennedy had asked me to do as well.
And that's my point of order, so you could rule on that, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm in favor of that. So we'll take it to a vote. Is anyone opposed to doing that? I didn't say that. Anyone opposed to doing that? We need to take it to a vote? I think we're all in favor. Okay, okay. So we'll wait till Claudia gets the amendment, and then we'll deal with it. So let's move on. Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want to ask two things. Well, the one under the application and scope, so these are all academic positions of academic responsibility. Is this, on all these positions, referring that the person applying is Roman Catholic?
Thank you, trustee Carabella. To director Klein?
To put it over to our HR superintendent, but I think the yes and no answer. Superintendent Oldman, depends.
So that would be covered, trustee Carabella, high and through you, Chair. That would be covered under requirements bullet two, where it says candidates will be required to submit a pastoral letter, letter of reference dated within the last year, and that's 12 months. So we added that clarification just because we have school years and 12-month rolling calendar, so we just put it in there for clarity. But that would be covered in that bullet.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Do you have a follow-up, trustee Carabella?
Well, the follow-up, it's a little bit related to the, the new bullet, the new bullets that we're going to be discussing with the trustee Saunders brought forward. But I'd like clarity on, like, that first bullet, this, the first red bullet on that page. "HCDSB believes that every person has a right to employment without discrimination." Yes. And then, "While qualification and experience will be determining factors, "HCDSB shall promote the hiring of staff from underrepresented groups." So I'm like, I'm, I'm catching like a bit of a contradiction in that the first sentence, I thought, would be encompassing everybody. So I would like clarity on that second sentence, and what exactly is meant by promote? And like, who would be judging that?
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Director Klein, over to Superintendent Oldman.
Thank you, and through your chair. So this language is, is actually directly pulled from our equity and inclusive education policy and procedural language. Really ultimately what it strikes, and perhaps it's helpful to trustee Saunders, I guess, yet-to-be-seen amendment, but in terms of qualification and experience, we're not disputing that merit and qualifications are important to being successful in requisite positions. Those are the questions that we guide our interview processes based upon, to, in order to solicit in an interview process. But I think what we're trying to say in terms of shall promote the hiring is evidence undisputably suggests that when students are seen in their educators, their level of success and achievement is, is excelled. So I think that that's what we're trying to call out, is that we are trying to call through our workforce census, and what our student census and our workforce census bridge together call us to do is to provide a bridge to those representational gaps that currently exist. So we are trying to, with qualification and merit, not disputing that those exist, but that there's a preposition that those can exist with an underrepresented individual from, from an underrepresented group. And I think that that's just a dangerous assumption, so I think we're calling it out to make sure that that is understood. I think that's also reflected in the language on every single posting that we put out as well. Because traditionally, our data suggests we have not been fulfilling that mandate to have schools and staff represent the students and communities that we serve.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Moving on, trustee Dwork.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I just want clarification from Superintendent Oldman
on the requirements for hiring teachers as per PPM 165. Is that what we are following, Madam Chair, is...
Thank you, trustee Dwork. Superintendent Oldman.
Yep. Very, trustee Dwork, may I just clarify, PPM 165 is where the basis for both of those bullets actually come from. But specifically, the, the notations of the second red bullet under the application scope, that's pulled directly from PPM 165.
Correct. Thank you. I just wanted a clarification.
Okay.
Madam Chair, PPM 165 is very clear about those two items that are there. It's very clearly embedded in that, and we have taken out the statements from there to me, Madam Chair. So it's clear to me. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Dwork. So your clarification has been sufficient?
Yes, I just wanted clarification.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Trustee Kennedy?
I just had a question around the word promote, but I think you answered. I thought the word promote meant like market, like HCDSB will market to certain underrepresented groups, but it doesn't mean market or reach out to communities.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Superintendent Oldman.
Thank you, through your chair. I, I'd like to think that it actually suggests both, because that's the work that we are undertaking. I think in terms of outreach, certainly that's a bigger opportunity in which we, we have work to do. But I think the initial work in, in most of this is calling out that we have a gap, and we have a gap that we're ultimately there to bridge and, and fill. So I think promote is, is, is meant to be both. Trustee Kennedy?
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Trustee Kennedy, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, just a follow-up. So we have, so I guess the question I'm wondering is, teachers, my understanding, they have to be Catholic. That, that's our largest hiring movement, teachers. That be fair to say?
Superintendent Oldman, but I think proportionally correct, yeah.
Proportionally. So, but all students don't have to be Catholic, right? So how are you, if you want to represent, are you representing it from the Catholic demographics, right? Or are you representing it from the student demographics that we have in our, in our, like, when you're looking at representing? Because we're only, we can only hire Catholic teachers. Are we comparing our demographics to Halton as a whole? Or are we comparing our teaching staff to Catholic demographic? Because that's all we can hire from. Right? Like, am I right?
Thank you, trustee Kennedy.
They don't line up exactly the same. Like, a public school board can hire from any demographic. Like, they don't have to be Catholic, Protestant, any religion. But Dwork teachers have to be Catholic.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Superintendent Oldman?
Thank you, through your chair. Yes, that, that's, that's that second bullet under the requirement section. We do require that we have a successful pastoral reference on hand, a letter of reference dated within the last 12 months for our... We do require that we have a successful pastoral reference on hand, a letter of reference, um, dated within the last 12 months for, um, our ECEs and our teachers. Trustee Kennedy.
Thank you, superintendent Oldman. I'm going to have to move on. If we have more questions, we can get back in the queue. Trustee Murphy.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Um, first off, I'd just like to say that, um, I'm, I'm fully in favor of diversity in hiring. I believe that like, you know, there's no harmony if we're all singing the same tune kind of thing. But I just have a clarifying question for you, um, superintendent Oldman. Uh, you mentioned that we have not been meeting our mandate to hire staff from under, underrepresented groups. And my question is this, is this because we have systemic barriers at our board that are preventing them from being hired? Or is it because we simply don't have the applicants from those underrepresented groups?
Thank you for that question, trustee Murphy. Superintendent Oldman.
Thank you, through you, Chair. So I, I would say there's, there's no doubt, um, several longstanding institutions such as educational institutions and, and Halton Catholic is not kept from, from that, um, this regard, is that there are no doubt systemic discriminatory barriers in play. And, and I, I don't think I say that with any contest, but, but I appreciate that's, that's up for everyone's individual, I guess, um, perspective. Uh, I think the other piece is we weren't collecting the data. So when we weren't collecting the data, we really wouldn't know. Um, and that's not something that I hide behind. That's something that we are now collecting the data and we now have data in, in a workforce census and student census. So now we ought to know. There isn't really the option to say, well, we didn't know whether we, to your, to your second part of your question, um, whether it was for lack of applicants. We weren't, uh, to trustee Saunders' earlier note, um, we weren't having self-identification, uh, components as part of the application process. So we really wouldn't have known any different. But our workforce census confirms that at least we don't have staff. And in the most, the most representative of our staff fall within staff who have been here for one to five years. That's what our workforce census tells us. So we've made strides, but that also tells us in the years prior, you know, six-plus years, we, we weren't doing that. And that probably reflects, we didn't have the data to really know otherwise. And again, that's not something I stand behind and hide on. I now know better. We now know better. So it's kind of that call, I think.
If I could follow up, please? Sorry, thank you, superintendent Oldman. Trustee Murphy, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, so. So then my follow-up question is, we haven't been asking applicants to self-identify. So is that, do you look at that as a systemic barrier? And if yes, like moving forward, are we going to be asking applicants to self-identify?
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Superintendent Oldman, are you prepared? Okay.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. Uh, we, we have been actually since, um, uh, I want to say consistently for all groups since January of 2022.
Thank you, superintendent Oldman. I'm going to have to move on. Other questions, we can move in the queue. Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Um, so I guess my question in regards to this would be, so I know that you mentioned that we're currently in the process of having or hiring more people in underrepresented groups. So I'm just wondering, how long would people or students, stakeholders start to see that within the demographics of our staff body?
Thank you, trustee Kelly. Director Klein.
Well, hope, hopefully people would, it depends on the applicants, of course. But hopefully you begin to see that, uh, as soon as possible. I think superintendent Oldman might have a greater sense of what the, uh, the lay of the land is, uh, right now. My own observations and experience have even been over the last few months in terms of, uh, some visible positions. We've already begun to see shifts in that. Go ahead.
If may I add in through you, Chair? To, to you, trustee Kelly. Certainly some of that work, and again, I, I would invite in terms of what the workforce census does tell us, is if you look year-over-year, within the last five years comparatively over the last 30 years, you will see the, the starkest difference. And I'd like to say that as, as, you know, the initial steps to that building of bridge. Um, I'd like to see that students are already beginning to see that, um, within their school's staff makeup, um, that that demography change, just like it's going to have to ongoingly change as our student demography continues to evolve and change. So I'd like to think we've already seen that in the last one to five years. But certainly that, that's the beginning of this work. By no means the end state. To, to the end state is, I guess, is a sight to be seen because I think there's an ongoing evolution to that end and a call on us to, to be prudent in response to that.
Thank you, superintendent Oldman. Trustee Kelly, do you have a follow-up? Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, I see next in line trustee Carabella.
Thank you, um, through you, Madam Chair. Uh, what was the percentage of staff that completed the staff census?
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Superintendent Oldman, do you have that with you or?
I can grab that response right while we're sitting here. Just give me one second.
Okay. Trustee Carabella, do you have another question?
I do, thank you. I'm just wondering the, um, second last bullet to the requirements. The Director of Education will adhere to the procedure and implement this policy and make regular reports regarding the implementation of this policy, including any instances where qualifications and requirements have been waived or amended. So I just was thinking that that maybe we add in there. That would be something that we hear in camera. Correct? So maybe that, that should be added in there, that the location where we would hear that somebody's qualifications have been waived or amended would be in camera.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. I think I'll move over. Director Klein, maybe if you want to speak to that bullet point five under requirements?
Thank you, trustee Carabella. I, I would, I look at that as sort of taken for granted, but I think you're right. When we're talking about someone in, in camera.
Thank you.
Think we need to say it.
Okay, thank you, director Klein. Okay. Superintendent Oldman, you're okay? Okay, perfect. Please go ahead, yeah.
Through you, Chair. Uh, the response rate was 46%, uh, and that was a total of about just under 2,500 of our staff. They participated in the, the workforce census. I didn't want to misquote, so I wanted to be precise. So there you go.
Thank you, superintendent Oldman. Okay, I'm going to have to move on. So any more questions, please go back in the, trustee Agnew.
Hi, thank you through you, Madam Chair. So I'm just curious, um, if I look at, uh, a particular group as an example, so if I were to take, you know, perhaps the underrepresented group of those with disabilities, how are we able to ensure that we are, um, providing opportunities for individuals, say, let's say with disabilities when we actually don't have a fully accessible, uh, CEC? Uh, or things like that? So it's one thing to say that we are able to, that we would like in theory to be able to open up these opportunities for anyone and everyone that may be qualified for them, especially those who are underrepresented groups. But the reality is, again, that should that be the situation, uh, they actually, there's actually many, um, challenges with our CEC with respect to accessibility. So to me, that question that trustee Murphy asked with respect to barriers, whether they've added to an enlarged physical barriers, how can you, how can you be open to those, all of those groups when you may have physical barriers in place such as that?
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Superintendent Oldman, would you like to speak to that?
I can certainly endeavor to. Um, as part of our recruitment process, as part of the self-identification, trustee Agnew, we, we do, um, we do put that out there as part of the self-identification. And as, in compliance with the Accessibility Standards for Ontario Unswiss Disability Act, um, that there is a disclosure component. So that would obviously be through the interview process. Now, in the hiring process, um, I, I've actually worked through a number of these, um, with, with staff. One individual who, um, was visually impaired and, and had to work through a process through the hiring to, um, modify the site. So to en- ensure that that individual could work safely and competently within the building. So when, and, and in that circumstance, those would be investments we make in our staff and into our facilities to port, so to support our staff. I mean.
Yeah, thank you, superintendent Oldman. Trustee Agnew, follow-up. Go ahead.
So thank you for that. So then, if I'm hearing that correctly, then if we have a candidate who meets all of the criteria, is the best suited for that position, has all the qualifications, but there actually has to be a financial investment in order to make the particular environment fully accessible to them, whether that be a fully accessible washroom, whether that be elevator to get upstairs, whatever that might be, we're going to put that type of investment in to ensure that we can hire that person.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Superintendent Oldman?
Yes, I think that that's exactly what some of this language calls us to do, is to say, ensure that people have employment without discrimination. And I would call that discriminatory if we made the decision to say, sorry, we, we, you know, we can't have you, you know, come in here for whatever, you know, um, accessibility constraint we have. I would like to think that, that the qualifications and merit process, the hiring process itself, um, is, is what reigns in that regard. Trustee Agnew.
Thank you, superintendent Oldman. Okay, I'm going to move on. I do have three hands up. Trustee Saunders, do you have another question? Are you going to wait on your amendment? Okay. Uh, trustee Kennedy, then, you're next in line.
I'm just going to ask, um, when, I guess we're, there's an amendment pending, but when it says HCDSB shall promote the hiring of staff from underrepresented groups, should we say, again, it's to be an amendment? Staff from underrepresented groups in comparison to the student population? I think that's what we're trying to accomplish, or not, not comparison to the student population.
Trustee Kennedy, I'm going to throw that over to superintendent Oldman because that's the intent, what the intent of the policy is with that statement.
May I, may I answer the question with a question?
Absolutely.
Through you, Chair.
Sure.
Would that, does that, does it vary what the sentence says by adding that in?
Yeah, I think trustee Kennedy's, is that to define what underrepresented meaning in this? Director Klein?
I just want to add a little bit to what superintendent Oldman said. I think there's a lot of evidence, a lot of research shows, yes, exactly that, that when students see their own, uh, lived worlds and realities reflected in their teaching staff, that, that, that does show up in terms of their sense of confidence and competence. However, regardless, even if it doesn't necessarily reflect their own, uh, experience, their own roots, to, to have a growing in a, in a more diverse, uh, array of, uh, staff that serve them, regardless of them reflecting themselves necessarily. But for those groups that have been traditionally underrepresented, that's also good. So it is one of those rising tides lifts all the boats.
Thank you, director Klein. Superintendent Oldman, did you wish to add or?
Just hearing it, and I appreciate it's not a formal amendment. I, I mean, I, it is in comparison to, we're, we're looking at the staff and our staff demography in comparison to a student demography. So, I mean, I'd like to think that that was understood and implied, but I appreciate where we can be clear. It's important to be clear. So I'll just add that in context.
Superintendent Oldman. Trustee Kennedy, do you have a follow-up to superintendent Oldman's comment or?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
But just clarity.
To add that in. I just have a follow-up question. Um, so one of the, under policy IA 45 of Equity and Inclusive Education, there's many different, um, we see we have a wide, wide range of human qualities and attributes. So for diversity, one of them was, was gender. I just wonder, are our, is our teaching staff fairly 50/50 gender, like men, women? It's just, or are we skewed?
Thank you for that question, trustee Kennedy. I don't know if superintendent, do you hold that data with you?
Yes, so predominantly, I mean, I'm just going to speak to all staff. But we are about 81% individuals who identify as women. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, superintendent Oldman. Okay, moving on. Uh, trustee Carabella.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Back to the requirements and about waiving an amendment, uh, waiving and amending qualifications and requirements. So, uh, this bullet says this is the fourth one. With the exception of the appointment of superintendents and principals, the Director of Education shall have the discretion to waive or amend the qualifications and requirements in individual situations in order to ensure that only the best candidates are appointed. So again, I guess I see a bit of a, a contradiction because I would think that the best candidate would have, um, the qualifications and the necessary requirements. So I'd like to, to understand that and maybe given some examples of waiving and amending.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Director Klein.
I'll certainly lean on my superintendent of HR on this one as well in terms of examples, uh, having worked with a couple of directors who've done so.
Through you, Chair. So an example of such would be in the instance of, dare I go there, but French. We have in times, um, hired individuals who may be, um, in the pursuit of their FSL qualifications, um, and who at the time, so it would be something like that. And I'm, I'm kind of trying to paint a picture in that regard, but certainly a hard sought-after, um, certainly tech qualifications who are in the pursuit of it, but will have it at the time of, of assuming the position. That's really what that's meant to capture. Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, superintendent Oldman. Um, point of privilege, I, I can't hear people speaking because other people are speaking. So I really need us to respect other people and not speak at this time. Thank you very much. Trustee Carabella.
So just to clarify, thank you through you, Madam Chair. So that, um, so this is something that's sort of maybe temporary waived in the sense, maybe each one individually is different, but the possibility is that then that person has opportunity to achieve that qualification or, um, what was it, uh, requirement?
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Superintendent Oldman?
Yeah, that would be correct. It's really where there's kind of actively in a pursuit toward the end that would qualify that person. And I'm giving the example of a qualification in this regard, um, but certainly that would be kind of what that, that statement is there to capture.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, I see trustee Kennedy, is your hand still up? Okay, trustee Carabella. Okay. Okay, so seeing no more, no, not any hands up, we're going to move forth to the amendment. So Claudia, if you're okay, can you put this on the screen? Okay, so the amendment is in blue, I would assume. See how smart I am? Okay. So, um, trustee Saunders, uh, in order to put this forth, we need, you, we need a mover and a seconder. Okay, so trustee Saunders, you move it. I need a seconder for this amendment. Trustee Carabella will second the amendment. Trustee Saunders, you may speak to the point, but I please cautiously.
Oh, yeah, I will.
Watch the comments, please.
So my concern is not with where we want to go. My concern is with the process. And when the process starts to get away from merit-based hiring, we start to introduce potential unintended consequences. For example, I can give you a consequence that I've been involved in where it became known that the underrepresented group was disabled people. And everybody who applied for the process was disabled, which is, is highly unlikely. But what, what they were doing was now playing the system. So my, so my amendment says that we go out, we engage the, the groups of people that we need. We go to like teachers' college, we go to hiring fairs, we advertise, we do whatever we want. We bring these people in and then run them through the same process that everyone goes through. And that way we get high-quality people. There's no morale issues, there's no suggestion, you know, where we have grievances or issues. So this is just from my experience where people will play the system. If we start to move away from merit-based and move into different areas, the system will get, um, abused. And so it, it, it comes to the point where you'll identify an issue or an underrepresented group, and everybody in that process will identify as being in that group, even if they clearly are not part of that group. And we have no capacity to say, well, you're not in that group unless, you know, we come up with some, uh, something that governments haven't been able to accomplish. So what I'm just trying to say is, by using the language, the, uh, the, the process will become problematic. And I can tell you it'll become, you know, going downstream, we're going to have a lot of issues. So I'm thinking, instead of having, you know, uh, changing, you know, moving away from merit-based, we say, we go out actively. And at the beginning, it'll be a bit of work, say, we're looking for certain people in these underrepresented groups, please apply. But once they apply, they go through the same process as everyone. Out the other end, we get high-quality people that are, you know, focused on education, are people that we, that, you know, will be a credit to the, uh, Halton District Catholic School.
Trustee Saunders, okay, so can you please read the amendment?
Yeah, it says here, so the HS, uh, HCDSB will actively engage, recruit and invite members of underrepresented groups to apply for hiring process. These individuals will be evaluated in the same manner and all, as all applicants once included in the hiring process. And that's it. And that avoids like, like a world of problems that we're going to get into, and I guarantee you we will get into. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, trustee Saunders, please, I beg of you, watch the comments because what you're commenting, I was saying that we have unqualified people, so.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that as we move away from merit.
Please, please, I beg of you, just listen to me. So let's just read this and then we'll have questions about this. Just, in, in your life, it might have happened, but I don't want assumptions for our staff that this is happening already. Please, I just beg of you.
No, no.
Okay. So let's move on. So we have questions to the, so it was moved and seconded, so now we're going to go to questions. So, uh, student trustee McGuire, Lauren.
Thank you and through you, um, Madam Chair. Um, this is a question for trustee Saunders and stuff.
Yeah.
Um, so I was just reading the previous two bullet points and stuff, and they do mention factors about merit and stuff that you were talking about.
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify and stuff, how do you think that this amendment is, um, different from the other two, uh, bullet points? Thank you.
Thank you, student trustee McGuire. So trustee Saunders, if you could speak to that, that'd be great.
Through you, Madam Chair. So when we say HS, HCDSB recognizes the interdependent components of. So when we say HS, HCDSB recognizes the interdependent components of qualifications and merit, diversity, equity, and human rights, employment, mobility, fairness, transparency, monitoring, and evaluations, and conflict of interest in academic hiring. So what we're saying is that merit will be one thing we'll use, but we'll also bring in other factors. And I'm saying that merit should be the only factor that we bring in. And if we do our background work, we get the, we get people to apply to the process, the merit principle will serve us, we will, we will get to where we need to be. And, and, and I guarantee you, three, four years down the line, we will be exactly where we have to be, but we will have, we will be using the merit principle.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Student trustee McGuire, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, I do. I just wanted to ask and stuff, although merit is very important and should be the basis of hiring, I know that a lot of people from underrepresented groups may have extenuating circumstances because of their identity that have caused them to maybe not be able to access the same opportunities as others and stuff. And how do you think that we can still accommodate for that and stuff?
Thank you, student trustee McGuire. Trustee Saunders.
You know, I have a lot of faith that there are many, many people from underrepresented groups that are out there that are fully capable and fully qualified. And, you know, once we make the opportunity available to apply to a board, and they'll apply to a board because it'll be a good board, it'll be a fair board, it'll have all the positive things that a board has, we will get the people applying in, in, in these groups. They are, they're out there, they're qualified, you know, it's like, it's like a bell curve, you know, that, you know, you get people that are really great, people that are good, people that are okay, and people that aren't okay. There's lots of people out there that are great and good and okay, that, that will come forward once we give them, you know, the, the indication, this is where we want to go.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. I'm going to move on now to trustee Kelly.
Yeah, thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. So I guess my question here is that the wording has been very much so toned down, and it's gone through many different channels, through our HR, through our Equity Services, and obviously I believe that the previous points that we had were great. However, this is not debate in this question. So I guess I'm wondering about the concerns that would be addressed by parents, stakeholders, especially people of underrepresented groups, that have brought up concerns in regards to not feeling their students, their, themselves being represented within the staff body. So it's much, it's very much so prioritized, it needs to be prioritized, that we hire people that are in underrepresented groups. And by making this language very flip-floppy, it doesn't really prioritize that. It's not very active language, it's not productive language, that makes sure that people feel represented and have that sort of, you know, taking away that systemic discrimination that exists, that's been mentioned previously.
Thank you, trustee Kelly, for that comment. I don't think there was a question there, more of a comment, right?
Just more, so, like, the, the question was, how would we, like, how would you address the question in which people would not feel comfortable that that is not being addressed?
And who, who would you like to pose the question, Director Klein?
No, trust, oh, yeah, I guess Director Klein, whoever.
Director Klein?
If this were to be passed, I'm saying if this were amendment were passed.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought you were directing that at trustee Saunders. So if you could just.
Yeah, sure. It's just, if we had this amendment passed, how would we make sure that there's actual engagement, there's active work being done to make sure that our groups are represented? Just because this language is very flip-floppy, would it be very, through procedure, what would we do?
I'm going, I'm going to ask Superintendent Oldman, but I would have to say, first of all, like, having this suddenly there, I think we'd have to, we'd have to work as a team to see how we would actualize that. I would agree with you in terms of the, the adjectives you used, in terms of how the, the language has shifted in this, and that the language that was there prior to this was one that had worked through HRS team, through Human Rights and Equity, and through many others. So this would make it more difficult, but I'll, I'll toss it to Superintendent Oldman to see what her thoughts are in terms of how we would approach this.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. I, I think an amendment of this sort certainly doesn't meet our compliance requirements under the PPM. So I would just, I would just raise that in my professional opinion. I do think we are called to implement PPM 165, and that is embedded in those two bullets. There is in no way, shape, or form, both in the PPM and in what we're striking here to include in the policy, that suggests that merit and qualifications can't be in parallel with someone who is from an equity-deserving group. And I think the amendment might suggest that those are in contrast to one another, and so I would think we're not in compliance with PPM 165 with this language. So it would be a difficult thing probably to adequately defend or support in, in that regard.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Trustee Kelly, do you have a follow-up?
No, that answers my question.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on, trustee Agnew.
Through you, Madam Chair. So I just, there was something that trustee Saunders said, I need some clarification around. And you used the example of people with disabilities just as your example. But there was an inference that people would falsify that they had a disability, or they would, that they would lie about having disability, or having, being a part of an equity-deserving group, or being part of an under, so that, so the inference is that people would lie about that identification in order to get themselves ahead, if you will, in the hiring process?
Trustee Agnew, trustee Saunders.
Yeah, through you, that is exactly what will happen, and I have seen. People are interested.
Okay. Okay, follow-up, trustee Agnew? Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to suggest, as a friendly amendment, like, there's, I think the first line of the first bullet, HCDSB believes that every person has a right to employment without discrimination, that that can stay in as a very clear statement. I did have trouble with the next sentence, so not to do, yeah. So I was wondering if that could be something trustee Saunders would be okay to, and the others.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Trustee Saunders?
Yep, I like it.
Okay, just for my own sake, so what are we saying here? What's the friendly amendment? You want to add that line to the, the point in blue?
Well, Mr. Trustee Saunders had put a strike through it, so I'm suggesting to not strike that first sentence out. And we keep eight, because his amendment involves striking out and adding an amendment.
Striking out, replace, yes.
So I'm, I'm saying, I'd like that first sentence of his strike out, so we keep that, so it's not struck out. So that's, that's a bullet on its own. HCDSB believes that every person has a right to employment without discrimination. And then.
Okay, so the amendment would have one bullet point that says HCDSB believes that every person has a right to employment without discrimination, period, and then the amendment is the additional bullet point.
Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you.
For the friendly amendment, just unanimous, and I'm opposed to that change.
Okay. Yep, thank you for that, trustee Dwork, you're correct.
So can I make a, my amend, make an amendment, to move that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, let's, let's, yeah, so if that's not unanimous, so we have to go back to the drawing board, and we'll, we'll continue looking at the bullet point here, the full amendment from trustee Saunders, I think that's best practice.
Madam Chair. Can I add that to my amendment?
No, sorry, you cannot.
Sorry, can I, can I ask for a?
Because usually it's a strike and replace, so what you did, it was struck out something and completely replaced it, so now to be germane to that, it isn't. It's kind of like a separate bullet by itself, trustee Saunders, so we can.
Can I ask for a policy reference?
A policy reference?
Yeah, so I guess it's a point of, what, order, is there a policy that you're relying on that prevents me from?
Do you mean, like, bylaw?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, trustee Dwork, go ahead.
Bylaw 10.1, it talks about amending after a resolution. Move and second.
10.1?
Yep. Talks about the amendment, only, only one. 10.1, it talks to amendments. Now, for friendly amendments.
Is this an old one that I have? Because 10.1 is not that, I've got 10.1 moved in second motion.
For friendly amendments, Madam Chair, you've got to go back to Robert's Rules of Order.
10.1 in our bylaws is what motions?
10.18.
That makes a difference. To amend, okay, there we go. 10.18. After a resolution is moved and seconded, a motion to amend may be made. A motion to amend the amendment may be made. Only one amendment and one amendment to the amendment can be considered at one time. After a resolution is moved and seconded, which is this amendment, right? A motion to amend may be made. A motion to amend the amendment may be made. So to be perfectly honest, I don't see where it says only one amendment and one amendment to the amendment can be considered at one time. So the resolution is moved and seconded, this motion to amend is here, trustee Saunders brought it up and was moved and seconded, then a motion to amend the amendment was made by trustee Carabella. So it's, looks like it's in order.
Yep.
Yep. Yep, so it looks like it's in order. So trustee Carabella.
Okay.
That, we can not strike that line out.
Right.
And combine it together.
As an amendment.
As an amendment to the amendment, to amend the amendment.
Yeah.
If someone sees me going off track, speak up. I don't.
You're correct.
I'm okay if I'm going where, I want to make sure we're doing this right. Okay, so referencing 10.18, just for the minute, so we know why we're making this decision. Okay? 10.18, under to amend. The resolution's been moved and seconded, and then trustee Carabella is amending the amendment. Okay? Speak up or forever hold your peace.
Right, so I'm, I'm amending it, so I need a seconder?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because you're going to move the amendment to the, amending the amendment, so you need a seconder to amend the amendment. Okay, so that's trustee Saunders. Claudia, are you okay here? Yeah, we got to make, okay. So I think trustee Carabella, would you like to speak to it again? But I think you did speak to it, but you do have the right, now that it's moved and seconded, to amend the amendment and speak to that?
Yeah, thank you. I just think it's a very clear, overreaching, like, far-reaching quality, qualification, that we want to send that message, that we believe every person, every person, and that takes care of, every person has the right to employment without discrimination, and they go through the process, and I hope that we, and I'm sure we will have great staff. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Okay, so now we're, we're speaking to, I've got trustee Agnew. Trustee Carabella, you spoke to, trustee Dwork. Now we're speaking to the amendment of the amendment, amending the amendment. Clear as mud, everybody out there?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My hand was up for the previous amendment, but I can still talk to this one.
Okay.
And I'll come back and speak to the other amendment. Madam Chair, we cannot pick and choose. PPM 165 is very clear, it's, it's, it's a requirement by the ministry, there's no two ways about it, we cannot pick and choose. We have to go by that, that PPM, it's a requirement. The ministry expects all hiring decisions to follow that document, and so what we are trying to do here is pick one line that we think is correct and, and, and put it in policy. I don't think so, Madam Chair, and for that reason, I won't be supporting this.
Thank you, trustee Dwork, that was a comment, right? Speaking to that, no question.
Yes.
Do you have a follow-up?
Uh, no, thank you, Madam.
Okay, thank you, trustee Dwork. Trustee Kennedy?
I agree with trustee Dwork too, what he said there. So I, I looked up PPM 165, I just sent the copy. Maybe we can bring it up on the screen. I think it would be great just to use the language that we've been given, but that in our policy, because the language we've been given, which there's no disagreement on, we have to use this, maybe we can put it up on the screen, if that's okay, because we can directly use that language. It's just two paragraphs.
Okay, and so trustee Kennedy, I'm going to defer it over to superintendent Oldman, who created the policy where the working group, who is aware of PPM 165, maybe you could speak to that comment? As far as the verbiage for PPM 165?
Yeah, so of the five pillars, through you, Chair, thank you, of the five pillars, this is directly, the, the second bullet is in summation to the five bullets, and the first bullet, I guess, is, is, is both a general statement, I guess, about us as, as a Halt and Catholic District School Board, believing that every person, in accordance with the Human Rights Code, and really just dignity of person, has the right to be, to employment without any form of discrimination. And I would argue that that is in the pursuit of employment as well. So in terms of qualification and experience, those are the determining factors. I, I guess I'm, I'm lost still on, and am I speaking to the amendment at this point? Sorry, I guess I'm really, not, not that I would speak to the amendment.
Speaking to trustee Kennedy's, so trustee Kennedy suggested we use the verbiage right out of PPM 165.
I think that's what those two bullets are seeking, to do in summation.
Thank you, trustee, superintendent Oldman. Trustee Kennedy?
Can we, can we just show PPM 165 on the screen?
I don't.
Because it's very similar, but it's.
One second, trustee Kennedy. Let's just make sure Claudia is okay with this, she's got it ready. Okay. Should be in the policy, right? So in the policy under references, we have it referred to, right? PPM 165. But I think trustee Kennedy wants actual look at the verbiage, right? Okay, so this is PPM 165. Thank you, Claudia. Okay, so trustee Kennedy, if I understood you correctly, and it is under references PPM 165, you are suggesting, or maybe asking, why the verbiage isn't put in the policy?
Sorry.
Directly as this?
Yeah, so for like point number two, we have, point number one, we have HCDSB believes every person has a right to employment without discrimination. That pretty much matches that first bullet identically. And the second paragraph, we have very similar, but I think this one's a little more robust if we move the district given, because it talks about removing barriers, and specifically for indigenous peoples and equity-seeking groups, in all stages of the process. So I think this language would be, I would, personally, I think we should use the language that we've been given for our, for our continuation of, after the first sentence.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Superintendent Oldman, I just may add, it is referenced in our policy, so if you were to click on that link, it would send us right to this verbiage. So it's technically in the policy, but not written in the policy, correct? Is that a correct statement?
Yes, the references have been updated to include the reference to PPM 165 directly, which gets to this summation under that one pillar, and as, as well as the other four.
So I guess to my point, trustee, I was just saying, like, it is in the policy. It's not written in bullet points, but it's even better, because it links it directly to what PPM 165 says specifically. Just offering that up for your digestion. But it's in both. Like, we reference it in the policy, and then we write the other verbiage, so we kind of have greater in writer, do we not? Yeah, so under references, when you, when, if you were going to go look at the policy, let's say, if you click on the link, it would bring up PPM 165, which is what you're showing here.
Well, trustee, can you put on your mic?
I'm sorry, it's a long document, this has employment, mobility, and everything else in there. I just thought that, it looks like we were using the same kind of paragraph there, but just reinterpreting it in our own words, right? But changing from removing barriers to promote. So it's, it's a bit different than what we've been given.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Superintendent Oldman, I would never guess to, to, to be a mind reader, but to use PPM 65 and put it in the policy as the, the, the author of this policy, is that what the thought process was? You took the PPM 165 and put it into a couple bullet points with the same meaning?
Through you, Chair, that would be correct. Yeah, it's, it's to summarize a PPM succinctly and clearly for the interpreter of a policy, which is not probably what most people do, other than. which is not probably what most people do, other than to find folks in this room this evening. So, that really is the point there, is to provide a summation to the PPM, but note that it comes directly out of the PPM and our call to respond to that, yeah.
Thank you for clarifying. Trustee Kennedy, I'm going to have to move on to Trustee Murphy now.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I just want to follow up from Trustee Kennedy, that I agree that those two points on the PPM can be put into the policy and say exactly what we're trying to say. For example, one, anti-discriminatory hiring practices, or whatever that first bullet was, and the second one is that there are no barriers for any candidates at any stage in the hiring process. I think that's actually quite complete, covers the PPM, without saying something like promote hiring of underrepresented groups, which is actually, you know, like, if we're saying there's no discrimination, and all barriers will be removed at every stage, we're saying that anyway, in actually a more complete way, and that's my opinion.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Follow-up? Trustee Carabella?
Yes, what was my question? I think it was, okay, so we have our policy, and through Madam Chair, we have our policy, and then the references are, the PPM, excuse me, 165. So, if someone was going to use our policy, they could see those references, and we have to follow PPM 165. So, whatever is written in 165, we have to adhere to as well, right?
Trustee Carabella, correct. Superintendent Oldman, we'd be in big trouble if we didn't support a PPM that was sent to us from the ministry, right? That is part of our mandate, is to follow the PPMs. Correct?
Our practices, our hiring practices relates to teacher hiring are supposed to reflect the PPM.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella, follow-up?
No, just that I agree with the recent additions of the wording that Trustee Kennedy and Trustee Murphy have also put forward, they're very good as well. I don't know if we have some more time to think about this PPM 165, if it goes back to another policy meeting, or that we maybe there's more that can be done on further reflection. I myself didn't actually click 165 and read through it. So, and I'm seeing that there's a wealth there, that perhaps I even have another idea or on reflection. With the input of all of us, we could have a more fulsome bullet point for that, or incorporate some of those phrases.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. So, what we have to do, though, because we're in the middle of it, and we did this last time, we're in the middle of a, so we have an amendment, we amended an amendment that is moved and seconded, we have an amendment that's been moved, and so we've got to take care of business first, so we need to move on, we need to move on with that. Trustee Carabella?
Madam Chair, would it be like a motion to refer it again to staff, and to bring it to another policy meeting? I think that would work, because we haven't voted yet on that, and then when it comes back.
Madam Chair.
Oh.
Hold on, hold on. Okay, so, Trustee Duarte, you have a comment?
I would just suggest that we deal with the two amendments now, and then once we close the amendments, then unanimously agree to bring it back to the next meeting or whatever, but we need to close what we have opened up.
Thank you for the collaboration. I think that's the cleanest way to do it, so we don't get ourselves into trouble and have amendments hanging out there, and then have to fix something again, so. So, does anyone else wish to speak to it? I have one comment, but Trustee Duarte, go ahead, but I haven't spoken yet.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just wanted to, just a comment. My colleague, Trustee Kennedy, suggested those changes, but that does not complete and encompass the entire PPM. There are several headings, what was chosen is one paragraph. The bullets that are put by Superintendent Oldman, that has been put with much thought. Changing and interesting a paragraph, there and there, does not solve the problem, you're going to create bigger problems. So, my comment was, even though the suggestion was nice, it does not encompass everything, and I would not be comfortable to make a decision on that.
Thank you, Trustee Duarte. I just wanted to speak to, I just want to make a comment, and listening to all the conversation, and, you know, everyone's allowed to have their own opinion. My only concern here is that Superintendent Oldman is HR. I do not have a degree in HR at all. So, for me to try to wordsmith something, if we're being told that PPM 165 is what we need to do, and we have it in there, and I think the intent is in there, and I appreciate that we're trying to move forward and get better, I don't want to play with the wordsmith as, at all, but that's my personal opinion. Having said that, I think we should go with a vote, and just to make sure everyone's clear, I want to make sure we all know what we're voting on. So, we're going to vote on Trustee Carabella's amendment to the amendment, which would say, the one bullet point, "Halt and Catholic District School Board believes that every person has a right to employment without discrimination," one bullet point. Then, the new bullet that says, "The HCSB will actively engage, recruit, and invite, bless you, members of underrepresented groups to apply for hiring processes. These individuals will be evaluated in the same manner as all applicants, once included in the hiring process." So, I'm going to go around, and I'm going to say in favor or opposed to that, those two things, okay? Trustee Carabella?
Through you, Madam Chair, I think the first vote is just on the unstriking, because that's the second amendment, and then we do another vote for whatever is in there.
What is the will of the board? I took it to be together, one amendment to the amendment.
It's together?
Yeah.
The first vote will be the bottom yellow paragraph, with the first yellow line. The second, if that passes, then vote on
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just to clarify, so we're voting on both, the first line?
Both, together. So, we're voting on your amendment, plus Trustee Carabella added unstruck, if that's proper grammar, that one line to that second bullet point, together. Because it's an amendment to your amendment, so it's an addition to your amendment.
But do we not have to vote on the amendment to the amendment?
That's what we're doing right now, so
No, but we're voting on the whole thing, so we're saying, so I would think that we'd have to vote on the amendment to the amendment, whether to keep it in, and then we vote on the whole amendment?
No, because, so what I'm trying, we had an amendment, we amended the amendment. The amendment to the amendment is unstriking that one line. So, we're going to vote, if it passes, then we have to vote again on your amendment with or minus that one line. Makes sense? Makes sense? Trustee Kennedy?
Propose an amendment. The only reason why, you don't have to do it, but the only reason why is, I'm just saying, the second paragraph, that's great, crossed out, we're not doing it, but just, that paragraph really can't be crossed out, because the last line that says, "Conflict of interest in academic hiring requirements," you take that out, you're going directly against PPM, and you get 165, because it says you can have a conflict. So, you can't cross that last seven words out, eight words.
The problem is, 10.18, we're only allowed to do one amendment to the amendment. 10.18 by law specifically says, you're only allowed to do an amendment to the amendment. You can't do an amendment to the amendment to the amendment. Thank goodness.
So, this vote right now, then, Madam Chair, is everything we see there as it is? Oh, just, no, but it includes the crossing out, we're voting to cross out, and we can't cross out that last one.
Then you're going to have to vote accordingly, you're against it. Trustee Carabella?
I think, thank you, Madam Chair, I'm understanding what Trustee Kennedy is saying, that actually we cannot strike that out, so it's not in order, that part of the amendment that Trustee Saunders proposed is not in order. So, he can't actually strike that one out, is that what you're saying? And that, so, when he proposed his amendment, it really could only be the first bullet, and his striking out the first bullet, and adding the one in blue.
Yeah? Yeah, agreed, yeah.
But I think as Chair, if it's against, straight against the PPM, you would can say, rule it's not in order.
No, but we could argue the rest is against PPM 165 as well.
I don't think so. You think the rest, right?
And we've kind of already moved and seconded both of these, so it's kind of, we own it now, it's ours. Yeah? Trustee Kennedy?
I can just share where I got that from, because it says fairness and transparency, clear steps to avoid nepotism, so that whole line at the back, you can't cross that. That's what I don't, I just
Hey, policy team?
I just have a point of clarification, yeah. So, if this does not pass, we'll be back at square one, and at which point can one of us put forward a motion to bring this forward to the next policy meeting to re-pass it out again?
You could put a motion to refer or postpone, or, yeah, yeah. Clear as mud, isn't it? Yeah. Okay, we're going to vote. Okay, Trustee Carabella? Yeah, I want to make sure everyone knows what we're voting on.
Okay, just to clarify, we're voting on the amendment to the amendment, and if we agree, then we vote on the combined amendment.
The amendment as amended.
Amendment as amended, and if we disagree, then what happens?
Then we go back to your original amendment and vote on that by itself. Okay, so, right now, it's the two, the two, and thank you for this, Claudia, right now, we're voting if we want these two things highlighted in yellow in the policy, that's what we're voting on. Okay? Ready? That's fine, go ahead.
So, if this passes as is, can then we put a new amendment to add back in the part about the academic hiring, conflict of interest?
I would say at that point, if we're going to get into multiple amendments, it might be best a motion to refer.
Okay.
For the sake of efficiency, is all I'm saying. Okay, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay? Okay, ready?
So, do I speak to it at the end, as our last comment?
No, we need to vote now, yeah, we're good. You
Is that not part of the poll, like I have
Well, this is the amendment to the amendment, this is Trustee Carabella's actually. Okay. Ready, everybody? Are you sure? Okay, let's go. Okay, so, Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Duarte?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Opposed.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Student Trustee McGuire?
Opposed.
I am also opposed. So, one, two, pardon it? Trustee Kennedy, I got? Trustee Kelly, I got? One, two, three, four, five, six. Six opposed? No, sorry, seven opposed, three again. So, that amendment to the amendment fails. Now, we're going to move on, and we're going to, we're going to look at that bullet point that Trustee Saunders has moved and had seconded, that amendment. Trustee Saunders, do you wish to speak to that?
Yeah, just quickly, so, yeah, there's no inference in here, other than a concern with the process, that Superintendent Oldman has interpreted PP 165, I think it's going to introduce some real complications to hiring going forward. So, this was meant to sort of bring it down to, you know, where we're engaging people that are in these groups, we're bringing them in, and we're putting them through the same process. So, that's what the intent of this is, and it's to avoid, like, a whole world of problems that would could, but will probably come out of the other interpretation.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Saunders. At that point, we're going to move, we're going to go to a vote. Student Trustee McGuire? Trustee Carabella? Your hand's gone. Okay, Trustee Carabella, I see your hand now.
Through you, Madam Chair, so at this point, so that other amendment didn't work, but can we make an amendment now to unstrike the second paragraph?
Yeah.
So, we can unstrike the second paragraph? And keep the third?
Yeah.
And I would have liked the first line.
So, that's another amendment to the amendment?
Okay.
Okay?
Because we need that one.
Okay, so, okay, so let's, let's get a mover and a seconder.
I'll move it.
Trustee Murphy? Well, Trustee Carabella will move it.
Okay, here, I have another, so, in my amendment would be to undo that and undo the first line. So that they're together.
Okay, it's just for Claudia's sake, so she can keep track of us?
Yes, that's it.
Right. So, everything highlighted in yellow, Trustee Carabella, is your proposed amendment to the amendment?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you will move that, correct?
I will move it.
Okay, and I believe Trustee Murphy was already moving, but will you second that, Trustee Murphy? Okay. Okay, do we need to speak to this, or can we move to a vote, please? Sorry, Superintendent Buckeye?
Sorry, just wanted to clarify, we struck then the paragraph that says, "The HCSB will actively engage, recruit, invite members?"
No.
Not yet.
They want to keep it in.
Want to keep it in?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Okay, let's vote. Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Duarte?
Opposed.
Student Trustee McGuire?
Opposed.
Trustee Saunders?
Opposed.
Trustee Powell? Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Okay, Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Okay, and I'm opposed, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven opposed, three in favor, that amendment to the amendment fails. Okay, so now we go back to the original amendment that Trustee Saunders submitted, which is the bullet point in, well, it was in blue, but Claudia's doing such a great job, we'll give her a few minutes to un-highlight in yellow, thank you, Claudia. Okay, so right now, we're looking at that bullet point, what is an addition to the policy, and an amendment submitted by Trustee Saunders, correct, Trustee Saunders? Okay. Okay, I think we can go ahead and vote unless someone's opposed to that. I think we've had a pretty good discussion. Trustee Duarte?
I have my hand up, can I?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just a comment here, I did hear a comment saying that merit, it should be merit-based. I've been through a few interviews at HCSB, and I can confidently say that we have a robust system in place, and merit is the factor which is primarily considered, we have a very robust system. And again, I heard a comment saying that merit is not the factor, as it states in the two bullet, but I'll confirm that and say that we have a robust system, merit is the factor. And the thing is, ministry expects the decisions, hiring decisions to be made, as I said before, on PPM 165. These changes will not ensure that we follow PPM 165, so I will not be supporting them.
Thank you, Trustee Duarte. Okay, I see another hand up, Trustee Saunders?
Yeah, I agree, I think that the staff here at HCSB have used merit, and I think they should continue.
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. I have hands up, we need to get this to a vote, folks. I see Trustee Murphy. Okay. All right, okay, so now we're voting on the bullet point in blue. Ready, folks? Okay, Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
Sorry to ask a clarifying question. If I vote in favor of this, does, like, there still can be things added in after the fact, correct?
Still can be, what do you mean?
Like, I'm happy with that bullet, but I'm not, but I'd be happier if something else was added as well. So, if I vote in favor, then, and it passes, then can we still add more to this policy?
That would be another amendment.
Favor. In favor.
Okay. Trustee Kennedy?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Student Trustee McGuire?
Opposed.
And I am opposed. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven opposed, three in favor, the amendment failed. Okay. So, we are back to the original policy as presented by Superintendent Oldman, and had lots of fulsome discussion, that's for sure. I do not see anyone's hands up at this point. So, the next, okay, Trustee Carabella?
I'm just putting my hand up to suggest that it goes back to the next policy meeting with, we look at some of the wording from PPM 165 and possibly add extra wording that was brought up during the discussions today.
So trustee Carabella, just for my clarity, your motion is to, there's a few of them that you have. Are you, what do you ask whom to move? Motion to postpone, to refer? So I'll just help you. So to postpone, 10.16, the motion to postpone to a certain kind of day takes precedence over motions to refer to amendment to postpone.
So postpone to the next meeting.
So postpone to whatever that's with the date of that. November 14th. So your motion would be, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, correct if I'm wrong, your motion is to postpone to the next policy meeting on November the 14th, 2023?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. I need a seconder for that. Trustee Murphy seconds the motion to postpone. Okay, does any people want to speak to this? Okay, I've got trustee Kennedy's hand up.
Just a general question, madam chair. So I see that we've made, there's a lot of little amendments, like superintendent, we wrote of education. Those are like obvious things. Is it the policy working group? So is it the policy working group at the bottom of the agenda page that sets in the other sentences based on the PPM?
So who makes those changes?
Yeah, like, is it a group?
Superintendent Kennedy, I'm going to, director of education, maybe you could explain the working group. Yep.
It's the working group in particular, but then it does go to the senior teams. Senior team looks at it from all its vantage points. We have certainly, HR, in a policy like this, HR is a huge one. Human rights and equity, of course, would be very important as well. The hundreds of years of experience with those who worked as educators and other staff, principling, superintendents also come to bear on this as well. So we kind of have the assembled, hopefully, council of, of those who have the experience and the, the expertise in these areas.
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustee Kennedy?
Just this one. Is it possible or is it, like, should, are trustees allowed to be on the policy working group given, you know, they're the ones that vote for these policies? You can have some input before it comes to the policy. Do some research as well.
Trustee Kennedy, Director Klein.
Looking at superintendent Bakai on this, I think in one, one area, the hours that we spend doing this are probably not ours that others would be willing to spend on it. I think we do have the venue and the forum for it now for people to do input, but I'm not sure what the experience has been here in the past on that. There is a lot of time and a lot of energy that goes into it, I can tell you. And I do know that we have forums for it here. And I think, I think there are those opportunities. So superintendent Bakai.
Thank you, through you, madam chair and Director Klein. So trustee Kennedy, the policy working group is a staff group and amendments that are put forward by the policy committee, meaning that is the trustees, would supersede any other comments or suggestions from the policy working group. The policy in and of itself is overseen by the superintendent responsible for the policy, which would be in this case superintendent Oldman.
Thank you, superintendent Bakai. One more, yeah?
So are trustees allowed on the policy working group? By law, or are they not allowed?
Trustee Kennedy, Director Klein, would you like superintendent Bakai to answer that?
Are they prohibited by law from being on that? Sorry? It is a committee that's run by staff.
I think trustee Kennedy, what we're hearing is a staff committee. So, no, they don't, trustees don't sit on a staff committee. Do we? Never? No. Okay, moving on. So I see trustee Dwork, you have your hand up.
Thank you, madam chair. I see there's lots of conversation, lots of interest in this policy. I just want to ask a question, madam chair, of superintendent Bakai or superintendent Oldman. Is this policy time sensitive? Does it have to be passed, decided on today or can it come back? Is it going to help, madam chair, and we get?
Thank you, trustee Dwork, in regards to the motion to postpone. Okay, superintendent Oldman.
Thank you, and through you, chair. Respectfully, like, I mean, really, the, the language that's been struck in here is, is really our professional obligation under the PPM to implement it in respect of that language, and we would continue doing so in practice and in policy. So to your question, I don't know that, that'll hinge on us changing our practice because our practice has to be consistent with PPM 165, which is what this language strikes to, I guess, enshrine in policy, if that helps.
Superintendent Oldman, trustee Dwork, you have your call.
Just to clarify, so there's no restrictions. I mean, there's not, no siding, I mean, no, nothing wrong in bringing the policy back to the next policy meeting, and it's not going to impact anything that we do. Just to clarify. So we could postpone this to the next meeting in your professional judgment?
I think it's prudent for staff to, to know that, I mean, that, that this is still something that validates the work that they're doing and in compliance with.
Right.
I mean, they've spent, we've spent time reviewing the policy and we do that in, in concert with the policy schedule. So I, I think it would be helpful and prudent if we think that there's a detour or deviance from this that we're streaking, seeking to strike, that would be helpful for staff, but I would just caution that the, that might, that might be suggestive in contrast to PPM 165. So I think it's prudent on us to.
Thank you, superintendent. And what I think I hear is superintendent Oldman, you know, they'll, they'll take a look at it, but it may not come back any different. Is that what, superintendent Oldman, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if we postpone it, we'll postpone it and you'll digest it and reflect upon it, but it may not come back any different, potentially, the policy.
I guess is that what's, what's sought through you, chair? Is that if we
No.
take this away, that we'll relook at this as, as HR professionals?
No, no, madam chair, I think I went across wrong with you. So we are not suggesting policy go back to the working committee. My question was, if we delay this policy to the next policy meeting, is there any impact to the work being done by staff? Is there something critical about the policy or can it just come back to the next meeting? Trustees have enough time to take a look at it.
So you're just confirming there's no negative effect to postpone it?
Correct.
But there is no intent to send it back to the working?
Not at all, no.
It's just gonna come back to the policy?
Correct.
All right. Superintendent Oldman?
Is there something that's outstanding that we can help clarify, I suppose? Just because we have invested the time into this, so I want to be respectful of that. So is if there's something we can help clarify from, from an HR services perspective, I'd be happily able to do so. So.
Good, madam chair. Yeah, I think I have nothing to clarify, but you go around the table and ask trustee.
So superintendent Oldman has offered up a question if any trustee would like to speak to that, as far as postponing it with any concerns that maybe HR can help us out with at the table tonight before we vote on the postponement. Trustee Kennedy?
A legacy.
A legacy hand. I've never heard that before. Okay.
It's a new term. I think I just want to read PPM 165 a little more detail, because it is quite robust. Just trying to understand where we, I understand the first sentence we have in that discrimination part, but the second one about removing barriers, I'd like to see something a little more there. That's a little bit in line. So I'm climbing.
Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, madam chair. That's what I wanted to echo as well, that to be able to, as a trustee, to go through the PPM 165 more diligently. I'd like that opportunity and perhaps the others would as well. Thank you.
Thank you for saying more diligently because we're provided the package before these meetings with all the references, that we should do the best we can to go through the packages before this meeting. And I say that most respectfully, so thank you for saying diligently. Appreciate that. Okay. trustee Murphy?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the same thing. I, I felt the edits that we had were encompassing PPM 165, and so I don't like it as it is. I have questions around saying that there is no discrimination at any, like, I would like to say that those, that barriers are removed at all stages of hurting, hiring, like, hurting, screening, hiring, but right now, the promoting hiring of underrepresented, underrepresented groups is contradictory to the no discrimination in hiring, to me.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Okay, trustee Kelly?
I do have an actual question in regards to postponing this specific policy. So I'm curious if we're currently following like the PPM specifically, like, have we been prioritizing or promoting hiring staff from underrepresented groups like at the moment currently, or is not passing this policy actually actively preventing us from doing so?
Thank you, trustee Kelly. Superintendent Oldman, I think that's a question for you.
Through you, chair. We are. Trustee Kelly.
So I think, so by postponing, we're not stopping any proactive hiring practices, right, superintendent? Okay, I see hands up, but I'm not sure. I've got trustee Carabella, trustee Kennedy. I think we've had a pretty fulsome discussion about this academic promotion policy. So we're gonna move on. So we're gonna, this motion is on the table. It's moved and seconded. It's a motion to postpone to the November 14th policy meeting. So I'm gonna go out and take a vote. It's, the only thing that's debatable anyways is the date. So we can't really have a debate about that. Okay, motion to postpone. I'm gonna start with trustee Saunders.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
Opposed.
Um, trustee, student trustee McGuire.
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
And I am opposed. One, two, three, four, five opposed. One, two, three, four, five in favor, except one of them, five opposed, one of them's a student trustee. So it's five in favor, four opposed. So we have postponed it for a discussion on the November 14th. It doesn't go back to the staff group. We just bring it back to the policy meeting. Okay? Okay. So I think I don't have to move on there. I want to make sure we've covered everything. We're good there. So I'm gonna move on because we postponed that policy. So it will not move on to the October 17th board meeting. Okay, item 6.4, we're moving on. Policy triple I dash zero five employee assault. Trustees, can I have someone please move that the policy committee recommends that policy triple I dash zero five employee assault be forwarded to the October 17th, 2023 regular board meeting for approval? May I have a mover to rescind, sorry? Trustee Carabella, thank you. Seconder? Trustee Dwork? Superintendent Oldman, you now have the floor.
Thank you, through you, chair. Again, a pretty succinct, I guess, ask here. Policy triple I 15 workplace violence was implemented when legislation had changed in 2010, where it was requiring employers to have certain particular, I guess, requirements in place as it relates to preventing and protecting against workplace violence. At that time, policy triple I 05 ought to have been rescinded as policy triple I 15. When it came into play in 2010, workplace violence is all encompassing from a legislative compliance perspective. So my ask this evening is to acknowledge the redundancy of policy triple I 05, and it should be rescinded, in my opinion. That's it.
Thank you, superintendent Oldman. Trustees, I will now open the floor to any questions. I see trustee Kennedy, you have your hand up. Pardon? Oh, okay. Okay, I do not see any hands up. So now I'm gonna take it to a recorded vote. Uh, trustee? Trustee Dwork?
To rescind, you need a two-third vote.
Thank you. I forgot about that. Good job. Okay, trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell? Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Student trustee McGuire?
In favor.
I am also in favor, so it's unanimous, which I think is more than two-thirds. So the, the policy we brought forward to the next regular board meeting on October 17th, 2023. Okay, moving on. Item number seven. So this is a discussion item that I wanted to bring forward and, and it was in the report, but let me read it because it's very succinct and kind of explains the thought process here. So we have a discussion item this evening, which is provide an update regarding the review of policy I dash 36 trustee code of conduct. Policy, policy I dash 36 trustee code of conduct was last reviewed as a discussion item back in December 2020. The policy was deferred due to the review process of the Holden Catholic School Board procedural bylaws and pending Ministry of Education direction regarding possible changes to be implemented to boards trustee codes of conduct. In the recently released Bill 98, section 24, amendments to regulations mandate boards to adopt specific codes of conduct that apply to trustees of the board, including amendments that set out the process that shall apply where there is an allegation of breach of the code of conduct and the mandated use of integrity commissioners. Oxta, the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association, has provided the following recommendation, that the Ministry of Education consult with Oxta and Catholic school boards when developing regulations related to the code of conduct affecting Catholic school trustees in an effort to recognize and support the distinct role of the Catholic school trustees. I wanted to bring it forward because it was due up to be discussed, but I, I'm offering up to our committee and to our board of trustees that we wait and see what the ministry is going to do. The Ministry of Education has a couple of things that are already open on the registry, which is shared assets, director, performance appraisal. The code of conduct is not there yet, but it will be. So I'm just offering up that we wait, we hold this policy until we get some direction from the Ministry of Education, so we don't change it and then have to change it again. I don't think that's efficient, in my opinion, for resources. So I'm wondering if anyone is opposed to that or has their hand up? Trustee Dwork? No? Yes?
Just a comment, madam chair, just echoing, echoing what you said, that we do not need to, to amend a policy or review a policy until and unless we have legislative changes. And it's upcoming, we know that. And so I don't, I think we can wait, in my opinion, that can be.
Yeah, we just wanted to be transparent and show that, yes, it shows that it's out of date, but this is the reason why, and this is the reason why we want to hold on to it, because of the recent announcements from the ministry about maybe possibly having some specific ideas for trustee code of conduct. Then if there's any changes, we can take that verbiage and enter it into our policy, so we're completely bending. Okay, trustee Carabella?
Thank you, through you, madam chair. So the bottom section about Oxta working with the government, but, so is that on working with the government now about Bill?
Bill 98? There's multiple issues in Bill 98. So there was, there was directors of education, performance appraisal, proceeds, a disposition of property and shared ownership. That right now is on what's called a registry, and you can go into this registry and it shows all the open items where you can have public opinion. That's on there now. The code of conduct will probably come next. So they open it up for about a month. So they probably won't open that up for a little while. Pat Daly from Oxta didn't give me a timeline, but it's next in line.
So they're waiting to be consulted?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more questions. So I, I feel like we have them in favor, that we're just gonna hold on to it till we get more information from the ministry. So I appreciate that from everybody. We're gonna move on to item number eight, information items. Items 8.1 to 8.4, these are all administrative procedures. They've been provided for your information, and these were already approved at our October 2nd, at the October 2nd, 2023 senior admin meeting. Not ours, but their staff. Item 8.5 provides the composition of the 2324 policy working group.
Madam chair?
Yes, ma'am, trustee Carabella.
I don't see my hand up.
Oh, I didn't see it, sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Because it's not usual that I put my hand up on this section. But regarding a procedure V128, which was the selection and appointment of positions of academic administrative responsibilities, I understand it's a procedure, but I just have some questions. So I have, the one question I have is we are changing some titles from executive officer to superintendent, and I wanted to know the reason for that and what, yeah, the reason for that.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Do you know where in the procedure that is? What page? Because Claudia's trying to cap, keep up.
It's the, here, right there, job posting, the superintendent, human resources services. So instead of the executive officer of human resources services.
Oh, okay, so why that was changed? Thank you, trustee Carabella. I guess over to Director Klein.
Yeah, I think it just reflects an evolution in titles, but I'll turn it over to our superintendent.
Yeah, we, through you, chair.
Yeah, we, through you, Chair. We did the same thing through our collective bargaining processes to update and have relevant titles, and that's reflective of the, the posting I would have applied into and the position title that I hold. So that was really just of the housekeeping item, trustee Carabella, that's all it was seen to be.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Follow-up, trustee Carabella?
Yeah, so thank you, because I'm just, so for me, clarification would be that a superintendent would be in charge of like the education and would be. Yeah, I thought that the superintendent was basically one of the parts of the educational system that would be involved in overseeing principles. I thought that was a particular phrase for superintendent, and that the executive officer was Mr. Aaron Loth and other positions.
Thank.
So I don't understand the housekeeping part of it if I would switch.
Okay, so maybe trustee Carabella is looking for some clarity on that.
They're interchangeable terms, ultimately, trustee Carabella. Like, I, I'm indifferent what anyone wants to ultimately call me, provided it's not a derogatory term or something, but to me, they're, they're interchangeable terms. So, so I think they were both sufficient. It's really a relevant title that, again, the posted position that I applied into stated that. My understanding is my predecessor went by a different title. Again, it was strictly a housekeeping item to that effect. I'm indifferent, though, if that's a material change that we're, we're not liking.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman.
Thank you. I had one more question.
Okay, one more, and then I'll go to trustee Agnew.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so on page three of five, under the, this is the panel memberships for hiring, under superintendent, okay, under superintendent of education, three trustee representatives at the discretion of the director of education. And so that's, I'm clarifying because that's in, it's not specified in our policy, policy III-I dash 11, hiring and promotion policy academic and non-academic personnel. It says here, the board of trustees through a hiring committee composed of three trustees, secretary director, executive officer of human resources and senior staff will perform the function and continues. So here, it is three trustees, that it's not clarified how they're selected, and in my past, it has been selected. I've been involved in a selection through pulling names out of a hat as to which trustee was involved in the hiring, and in this particular procedure, it says that it's at the discretion of the director of education, which I don't know if, as trustees, we haven't had that So I don't, I think there's a discrepancy between the procedure and the policy, that it should just say three trustee representatives and not at the discretion of the director of education, if it complies with policy 111 dash 11.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Director Klein, is this is procedural in nature?
It is procedural in nature, Chair, and I would just point out that I don't know if that one has changed, just looking at the, the colors on that. I think that was what was there before. So there hasn't been a change in it.
That's fine, but it's not in compliance to the policy, in my opinion.
See, I don't have it, I wasn't listening carefully enough.
So can we take that back and just check? Because this is procedural? Director Klein, just, could you just double check the procedure versus the policy as trustee Carabella? Because I don't have the policy handy as well and wouldn't be able to speak to it so quickly. And come back to us.
I do know, again, in terms of the essence of this, right? So I'm, as director, the superintendents are those I supervise, those I work with every day, so I think that's what it reflects in this. But I'll look at the policy.
Thank you, Director Klein. Thank you, trustee Carabella. Trustee Agnew?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Just a question with respect to the addition of delegate after the director of education, the director of education or delegate in sort of that first area that trustee Carabella, just wondering why, I understand adding a delegate for the superintendent of HR, but I'm not quite sure why we would need to add a delegate for the director of education.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Director Klein?
Sorry, you just point out the.
So it's under requirement, yeah, it's up on the screen now, Director Klein? It's number two, I think. Trustee Agnew, you're referring to that, right? Or, oh, one and two, yeah.
Why designate for the director of education?
Well, I think, I think it would reflect the vagaries of life and existence, and if there's an opportune point where the director is unable to fulfill those duties, I'm guessing that.
Yeah, I, I think it's really to ensure that we're, we're, I guess, expeditious in our posting and responsive in that. I guess that could have, that apply in a multitude of realities of how a designate could be determined. It was really just for, for efficiency purposes, trustee Agnew.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Follow-up, trustee Agnew?
Yeah, I'm just curious if it's, if it's been an issue in the past, if that's why it's been added, because I don't think it's been there previously, so I'm just wondering if there's been an issue that we've needed to have a designate. Again, I understand it from the HR perspective because you need to keep the process going, but I'm just wondering from the director of education, so have we had issues? Is that why we've had to add designate?
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Director Klein?
Well, not with me, certainly.
Trustee Oldman, Superintendent Oldman?
Getting a promotion here, to the earlier discussion. So through you, Chair, certainly not in terms of a, of a delay or concern, trustee Agnew. There are times, and I think, you know, a quick example that I can probably provide is within our principal and vice principal pools, where we, we want to act really quickly and, and responsibly and competitively at particular times, and, and sometimes that call will be made, and then it'll be an informational report to, to the director, respectfully, just, just to move things quickly. So that's really what that's really intended to capture of that.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Trustee Dwork?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just going back to the question of my colleague, trustee Carabella, the policies, all the policies shall be implemented by our employee and that's director Klein. So this policy here, which is III-I-11, talks about the board of trustees through a hiring committee composed of three trustees. This policy is to be implemented by the director. So the directors, various directors of over period, period of time have done things differently, and it's reflecting in the procedure too. Just a point of clarification, that policies are to be implemented by the director, and it's the director's role to implement the policy.
Thank you, trustee Dwork, and I think trustee Carabella would just even have an email from Director Klein to saying, hey, this is why it's different, and this is why. I think that would suffice. Just question, right? Okay, trustee Agnew, I think, yeah, that's okay. Okay, I don't see any more, any other hands up. Trustee Kennedy?
Thanks. I just have a question on page requirements, job postings, where we were. So the superintendent human resources shall ensure that advertisements and openings for our cars shall be posted as needed. Did we post positions for the last two superintendent hires?
Trustee Kennedy, so let's let Claudia get to where your question is, so we're all on the same page, so to speak. Is that the page there? Page three? Page three of five?
One of five, two of five.
Two of five.
The requirements, under blue, right there.
Oh, requirements, okay.
So job postings shall ensure advertisements and openings for cars shall be posted as needed by the director, generally externally, three weeks, 50 weeks. So just generally speaking, we post those positions for everyone to apply.
Trustee Kennedy, Director Klein?
I'll work with Superintendent Oldman here, going back last two, right? The first one, yes, that was posted, I think, in April, May, and closed later in May. Second posting, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Oldman.
Thank you, and through you, Chair.
Thank you.
Both of our most recent superintendent appointments were placed through a hiring process and through our pooled process. So we would have pooled a candidate, and, and through that is where we select candidates from, and that was done through a posted position where we had a pooled candidate and a successful candidate to that initial posting.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Trustee Kennedy, do you have a follow-up?
So for the second map, was that where people allowed, or not already in the pool to apply for that position, like principals? Were they able to apply for that superintendent position, or was that, was it just picked from the pool that you had from the previous position?
Thank you, trustee Kennedy, and we're referring to the procedure, we're following the procedure, right? We're not getting off track and talking about hiring practices, right?
Point of order, Madam Chair? We are talking about personnel and hiring process, it is an in-camera item, not be discussed.
We are getting very succinct in our questions, trustee Kennedy, so I will have to rule in favor of what trustee Dwork's saying. I, I guess I could just, this, the requirements and job postings, are we following that, Director Klein? Currently?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to move on now. We're going to move into item nine, which is miscellaneous information. I do not have any miscellaneous information. There was nothing added at the time of the approval of the agenda. Item number 10, correspondence, there was none submitted. Item number 11, right now, there is no in-camera agenda this evening. And could I please get someone to move a motion to excuse absent committee members, which are our student trustees? Thank you, trustee Agnew. May I have someone second that? Trustee Powell, got that? Okay, all in favor? Anyone opposed? No one's opposed, so the student trustees will be excused from tonight's policy meeting. May I please have a motion to adjourn? Motion, may I have a mover? Trustee Agnew, seconded by trustee Carabella. Anyone opposed? Thank you. I now ask trustee Kelly to end the meeting with a closing prayer.
If everyone could join me in the sign of faith, the name of Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Our Father who art in heaven.
Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen.